Table and that table down there. And you have to be on a live mic in order to be heard on the video. And also it helps in the room, too. So make sure you're on a live mic. We have, just going through the, we appear that we have a quorum, just barely. And going through the agenda, what we're gonna do is we have a variance recommendation. We have a couple of other things that we're gonna do first. And then at about seven, we'll take a short break. And at about seven, we're gonna do East Clinton Fire District Site Plan Approval. And that's a public hearing. So we'll go through the process for that after we do these first three things. And Goldman is not on the agenda anymore. That was the last thing. So we took that off. And I think that's, oh, our next meeting is December 2nd. Does the board have any comments or questions before we get started? Okay. So moving to the agenda items, why don't we start with the variance? This is Little Big Falls area variance, 81 Mountain View Road. Is anybody here for that? Hi, can you come up to the table and sit at that microphone? And we gotta turn it on if it's not on. Pete, is there a green light on?
Now it is.
There you go, good. So.
Is this good?
It sounds good, yeah. Actually, it works better if you're about a foot or so from maybe back a little bit.
Oh, great. Is that good?
Try that.
Hello?
Hi, how are you? So this, can you just tell us who you are, first of all?
Yes, my name is Jamie Machado. I'm the architect for the project. The owner is Jordan Liebowitz. It's 81 Mountain View Road and.
Move it back a little, Pete. Or just move it back, the mic back a little bit away from you.
Sorry about that.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So is this good?
I think so.
Okay, I can't hear it.
Yeah, I can't, we're just, it was reverberating.
And the, the family moved in this year and, actually, yeah, early this year or late last year. And they purchased the house. They, we had a permit for a pool in the backyard, which they're completing right now. And wanted to add a two-car garage on their property. And so that's what's on the table right now. The pool, I think, is near completion. And right now, we're looking for an areas, a area variance. And basically, the two-car garage is a 900 square foot building. Has a two-car garage plus a workout area. And it's supposed to align with the pool, kind of creating a courtyard for an outdoor space, which the family is gonna be using for activities, pool activities and, you know, parties and whatnot. The current location is north of the existing house. And if I could use the house as a placement, the, the property runs east-west. East is where the street of Mountain View Road is. West is a wooded area. North is a neighboring, you know, area. And south is just the same thing. So the house, using the house as a locator, the two-car garage would be north of it. There's a driveway north of it as well. It exists, existing driveway. Southeast of the house is a septic system. South of the house is a rock outcropping. West of it, directly west of it, is a new pool that they put in. Yes, and then even more west of that is a wooded area plus a huge mound, which believe, we believe is a, a rock underneath. We talked about different locations, but no place actually is good because then we have to relocate the driveway if we go south. So right now, we're using the driveway as a pivotal point. Actually, the kitchen and everything is on the north side of the building. And the two-car garage is gonna be shy of being north of the building. It's a little bit northwest. So it's in the northwest corner of the main building. That is actually where the driveway ends. And unfortunately, the house is basically very close to the 50-foot setback.
Right.
Is allowed in the zoning. And the building is, you know, skewed from a skewed border on the north, which is not like a true triangle. It kinda, you know, goes in different angles. And the building, the existing building is not parallel to the prop, north, north of the most property line. Making the two-car garage on an angle has two dimensions, using the two corners. One being about 15, I can't remember if it's 15 or 13. The other is 23. So we're in the building setback area. And I know that's not allowed, so.
So you need a variance.
We need a variance because there's really no other place to put it. We talked about putting the two-car garage in the back, but they do not like the idea of having their wooded area view from the house to be blocked by a two-car garage. So it's almost like the only place to put it.
So it's a garage and a gym, right?
Yes, it's a two-car garage. Adjacent to the two-car garage is a gym that would have a, a rolling door that comes, or actually a, almost like a piano, you know? It, it, it's, it's a, it, a folding window door that opens up to open up the whole room into the pool area. So it's like a, a bunch of, you know, glass doors that kinda open up like an accordion. So during the summer or nice days in the fall and, and spring, they would open that up to make the pool part of that area.
900 square feet?
900 square feet, yes, that's correct.
Does anybody have any comments?
The smallest thing is, applicant's name Lee Bowitz or Lee Burwitz? You got it, Lee Burwitz in here or Lee Bowitz in the application?
Oh, that might be my, well, Liebowitz.
Liebowitz, yeah.
The first thing we taught the law school was to get the client's name right.
Right. Little trickle of the finger.
So it's, it's, oh, I should've explained. We don't grant variances, we just make recommendations. So you're gonna have to go to, we make non-binding recommendations. So you're gonna have to go to the ZBA on December 4th and do this all over again.
Okay.
Just so you know.
Yeah, we, we. Excuse me?
Do you make applications in the ZBA?
Yes.
Yeah, it's the same.
Yeah.
We were aware of that.
I think you're already on the agenda, so.
Yes.
You don't have to do anything except show up.
Right.
And you have a, yeah, they'll have a hearing. So I guess I, it's a substantial variance because it's the entire building's in a setback. On the other hand, the lot is about 200 and something feet wide. And is substandard, I guess. So I can understand the logic behind placing it, where they wanna place it. And the only thing I, on the aerial, I saw that there was like a belt of newly planted, like evergreens or something. Maybe they're not new anymore. I don't know how old the aerial is, but.
Whereabouts?
Right on that, right on the property line where this is gonna be. There's like pine trees or some kind of.
Well, no, everything is existing.
Yeah, no, it's there, they're there, but you're gonna keep those, is that?
Uh, yes. We believe that's not gonna be in the way. Yes.
You're gonna be.
We're, we're not planning to take anything out, if anything.
No trees are coming out, okay.
No, 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 uh, those trees are staying.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Cause the next, the neck, the neighbor to the north, I guess it is, is only about 85 feet, right? 85 or 90 feet?
Correct.
So it's, they're pretty close. Is there any natural screening between this proposed building and the property line at all? I know it's only 13 feet, but, or.
We could add whatever is necessary. There are no windows on that side of the building. So we could have, you know, abrovites or whatever is recommended to be right up against the building. And, well, the idea was to have some privacy in the pool area. And also to block noise if anything's being created.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else? We could just suggest that the ZBA consider a screening condition. Right, okay. I mean, I, I, it is substantial, but I, I'm not, I, I don't, just because of the type of lot that it is, I'm, I'm kind of okay with it. Does everybody feel that way? Okay. So.
Is, is there any lofted space happening or is it just one, on the one floor?
No, it's just a one level. It has like a cathedral ceiling inside. So the small gym area will seem bigger. And plus, we put a, a folding window door system, which is all glass, which would, you know, it's like an accordion, basically, it just opens up. And then that space will seem a little bit bigger because it becomes part of the, the pool area. And I guess the surface area will be treated a little bit different. So it becomes part of, you know, you know, the, an area to hang out in between the gym and the pool.
So we don't have anything to read, so I'll just, I'll draft something up. But I, I'll, I'll make a motion to issue a positive recommendation to the ZBA with a possible or suggested condition that the applicant install screening at the property line if the ZBA deems it appropriate. And then, and then all the other usual things that we, it's substantial, it's self-created. It won't change the character of the neighborhood, that kind of thing. Okay, second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, all in favor? I. Okay, so you're through this hurdle.
Okay.
We gave a positive recommendation to them. They, they don't have to accept it, but that.
Understood.
It may help.
Yes.
And you'll go to them on December 4th at 7 o'clock? We don't know the time, just check with Arlene on the time.
Okay, December 4th. I think, Arlene, you told me the time and date already.
Yeah, December 4th.
Okay.
It might be earlier because we have a lot of variances, so.
Okay.
Just double-check the time before you go.
And the location is here, too? Okay.
Either here or in the next building, or the, sorry, the building to the left.
Okay, great.
The big tall building.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for the excellent presentation, appreciate it.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay, Shore Farm, special use permit and site plan for townhomes. This is Clinton Corners Road. This is brief discussion and circulation.
Hi, Jocelyn Young with KRC.
Thank you for coming. It's Jocelyn. Can we just let Adriana get set up just for a second? No, no problem. We're just gonna have to share mics.
I can get this one over here.
Okay, okay. Are you gonna, do you need to say anything now or are you?
Well, no, you were saying that Adriana might need to share.
Yeah, I don't know, will that go all the way over there? I, I'm not sure if it will, but. Just share the table, maybe.
Say hello.
Our emcee for the evening, Mr. Pizza Terran.
Testing, yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, it sounds good. Oops.
Now you just broke it in there, okay?
Yeah, that's a little carry-up, you sure? Let's use some of the budget surplus for new mics. Talk to Mike about that. Ah, Jocelyn, okay, so Shore Farm. And did you have anything, any preliminary comments you wanted to make on this?
No, we're just, we're not presenting anything new today. We're just here for the administrative actions.
Okay, so I think just in terms of administrative details, we will have you come back on December 2nd. And you're gonna be applying for a variance, as I understand it?
Yes.
And so you'll be submitting that, or maybe you already have?
We're submitting the application most likely this week.
Okay. So I don't know which ZBA agenda you'd get on at that point, but we can. It may be January, but that may, that really wouldn't affect some of the other things we're doing. So, okay, so all we're doing, Adriana, all we're doing today is, we're gonna, we're gonna review and vote to authorize the.
Circulation.
Circulation, which is attached to the MPV memo dated November 13, 2025, in your packet.
30 days, right?
30 days for response, yes.
For response, 30 days to respond.
We're coordinating with the Board of Appeals. Oh, right.
So we'll be circulating a notice of intent for the planning board to assume the role of lead agency under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And you'll, the involved and interested agencies will have 30 days to respond as to whether or not they would prefer being lead agency. We don't typically see anything like that happen. But we will be coordinating for this unlisted action with the zoning Board of Appeals, since they are also going to be requested to opine on variances. And so that's really the only action that the board can take at this time.
Okay. Oh, there was a question about the Department of Public Works. I think we just decided to go ahead and circulate to that.
Yeah, I brought. Yeah, I brought copies for everything on that list, yeah.
No, there was a question in the email traffic that I'm addressing. And then, oh, the circulation to Dutchess County Planning, is that as lead agency? Or is that a 239-type thing?
It would be 239.
Okay. So you're gonna do that, not as lead agency, okay? You got that? And then the only other thing is the CAC is a, it's a council, not a commission. And Barbara Mansell is the chair, just, I can.
So I can make those edits before, prior to circulating?
Great, that's all I had. Does anybody have any questions about what we're doing on the board? So, okay, I'll just, we don't have a resolution for this. I'll just make a motion to approve the, the secret notice of intent to become lead agency as drafted with those minor amendments to the CAC entry. Somebody second it? Okay, discussion? All in favor? I. Okay, so that's done. So we have all the packets and we're, okay, you have enough of everything?
Yeah, I was gonna say, so December 2nd, just for the variance?
Well, we'll probably have a more fulsome discussion of any open issues as well.
The 2nd or the 3rd?
2nd, it's Tuesday.
It's the first Tuesday.
So you, you, well, you, you'll come with a variance, but also can we address any of the comments? Okay.
We also wanted to ask if we were able to set a public hearing date for the site plan special use permit.
Can we, I, I'm gonna suggest we go over that on the 2nd.
Okay.
Oh, site visit, okay. What are, what are, do you have any idea what works for your clients in terms of site visiting? You know, weekends during the week? I'm just trying to get a sense of what would work for scheduling.
I think Natalie said anything can work, whatever works for the board, we can fit into our schedules.
So for the board members who are here, if we did a site visit, if people are interested, you know, what would be a good weekend, probably, right? You're gonna be. Or we can go to MISTI. Why don't we, I'm just, okay, you wanna think about it? Okay. We'll, we'll send an email around and then we'll get to you. Maybe like sort of late Saturday morning, something like that.
Okay.
Just to get the most number of people. We do have a holiday, so maybe, maybe December.
Okay, I hope that works.
So maybe after the holiday, we can try to get it done?
Yeah.
Okay.
But they're coming back for the December 2nd meeting for continued site plan review, is that right?
Well, the variance and, yeah.
But they haven't filed the variance yet, though, right?
No.
That's why they'll file it and then we'll discuss.
What's the, what's the deadline for them to get the variance?
Oh, there it is, so it's, it's December 2nd.
Meeting's December 2nd, so it's prior before that.
Definitely.
They're kinda getting it next week, so.
This week, tomorrow or Wednesday.
Actually, yeah, it's this week, it's really this week.
Yeah, we'll get it in this week.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody have anything else for this one? Shore Farm, anyone wants? Okay, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Yes.
Have a great holiday.
You as well. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay. And we're moving on to Brown, 99 Willow Lane, but we don't have Tom. Can we just, I, I have to refuse. What's that? Okay, okay. I have to leave the table, but I, I, I can be here in spirit, but we don't have Tom, so.
But wait, if you're passing a resolution, you need a call, but you're not.
Can you text him and just see when he's gonna get here? Tom.
Sorry.
We can have a discussion. Have, have a seat, we're sorry.
If we can get a quorum better, so.
What's that?
If we can get a quorum better, so we'll wait.
I know, I know.
Well, you can start the discussion and we're hoping he's gonna show. He, he was supposed to be here, so. Why don't we just go start and I'll be at the table and you text him.
Want me to go or? Oh, yeah, I think we're shaking. Do you want me to lead or do you wanna lead? Hi, good evening. Why don't you tell us who you are and why you're here with us?
Sorry, I wanted to wait until no one was on the phone. Good evening, Kristia Donna from Silverburg's Atlantis. On behalf of the applicant, seeking a wetlands permit for the property at 99 Willow Lane pursuant to zoning code section 25078. Also here with me this evening is Steve Marino, a principal senior wetland scientist from Tim Miller and Associates, and the applicant FD Schilling, who makes this application with the authority of the owner, Lindsay Brown.
Which one are you?
Kristia Donna. Kristi, C-H-R-I-S-T-I-E. Adanna, A-D-D-O-N-A. We, we appreciate the opportunity to appear before you tonight. We're presenting a new application that's been prepared in accordance with the determinations that have been issued by both the zoning board and this board previously. Just to briefly recap how we ended up here. In September of 2023, the applicant began some cleanup activities on the property, including removing waste that had been dumped there, not by the applicants, and some poison ivy. At the time, the applicant was not aware that a permit was needed for these activities. When the code enforcement officer did issue a stop-work order, the applicant immediately obliged and began working with the town to explore the process for obtaining the necessary permits. In the original application, the applicants did include some other site improvements that they were contemplating, including a circular driveway and a shed. To be abundantly clear, those aspects have been removed and are no longer be, being considered by the applicants now or at any point in the future. So all we are really proposing at this point is some restoration activities, which Mr. Marino will get into in detail regarding the work that was done in, in, in the wetland buffer area related to vegetation and replacing an existing fence. There was originally, back in 2024, a question of whether a permit was needed for these activities. That determination was ultimately appealed to the zoning board, which found that a permit was needed because of the nature of the activities and the fact that it was being proposed in the wetland buffer area. We acknowledge that and we have taken that into consideration and this board's subsequent determination to deny our application without prejudice in making the application that's before you today. And in doing so, Mr. Marino has prepared a certified wetland delineation map, provided a narrative of the proposed restoration, and has also responded to the comments that we received from your environmental consultants at Nelson Pope Voorhees. So with that, if any, unless there are any procedural questions for me, I'll let Mr. Marino walk you through the plans.
But not too close. Good evening, I'm Steve Marino, I'm principal and senior wetland scientist with Tim Miller Associates. This is one of the few towns south of Albany that I've never actually appeared before the planning board here, so I'll just give you a very quick introduction. I've been a wetland scientist for over 35 years. Currently, in context, I'm the wetland consultant for the town of Washington next door. I helped them draft their wetland regulations in 2011. I've been their consultant since that time. I've worked all through southeastern New York, as far up as Columbia County and Green County, and down onto Long Island. So I covered quite a bit of area in this, in this part of the world. As Kristi mentioned, this has come up because the applicants did some activities within the wetland, what was then determined to be the wetland buffer, including cleaning up the site, removal of some nuisance vegetation, removal of debris that had been dumped on the site. And once it was determined that this was a wetland and that the, a wetland permit was required from this board, we got to work to prepare the documentation that we needed. The initial submission included, as Kristi mentioned, part of a circular driveway, a part of a shed. Those were never constructed and those are no longer on the table as part of this. I did go out to the site and delineate the wetland in, in conformance with the town, as well as the state and Army Corps definitions of wetlands. Those have been mapped and I believe you have my certified map showing that, that location based on the Nelson Pope Voorhees comment letter. We also included on our most recent submission what the 50-foot buffer would look like on that, on that map. Much of the activity and planting activity that was, that was conducted is actually outside of that buffer area, but we're kind of including this as part and parcel as of overall restoration of the site. So what happened on the site is that in, after the cleanup was conducted, the area was seeded and a number of landscape plants were brought in just to beautify the area. A number of those plants are non-native plants, some of them are invasive plants. And so part of our proposal is the restoration of those, of that area by removing those non-native and invasive plant species and replanting with native plant species. We have provided a list and quantities for those plantings on the site. And you have that as part of your package. We've gone through the Nelson Pope comment letter, point by point. I believe that generally, from the tone of their, their comments, that they're on board with the idea that a restoration is appropriate for this site. They did have some question about specifics for plantings and we've included plant species, all native species and sizes for those plantings on our, on our submission. They had requested some information about whether erosion control and siltation methods would be required. The way the activity's gonna be conducted on the site is literally by shovel. The material that's been planted will be removed by shovel and new materials planted by shovel. So we don't anticipate any requirement for machines to be brought on the site to do anything to, to tear up the site in any way that erosion might be, might be an issue. So that's not going to be part of the application as well. The final item that's been proposed is to replace an existing box-wire fence that's there with a stockade fence, a privacy fence along the property line, a portion of which is outside of the buffer and a portion of which is inside the buffer. It's not a closed-in area, it won't be entirely closed. So generally, when we look at fencing in or around wetlands, we wanna know, is it gonna create a problem for wildlife movement in or out? But it's not a self, it's not an enclosed area, therefore, there's, shouldn't be any issues there with wildlife movement. The wetland itself is part of a smaller, is part of a, a wetland that extends slightly off-site. There's a draw that comes down on the north side of Willow Lane that eventually dumps to a water course on the western side of the property and then flows under Willow Lane towards the south. So that wetland, this, the wetland on-site here is a part of that wetland, that off-site wetland. But again, in looking at the mapping, the five-acre threshold, we don't seem to exceed that. So the 50-foot buffer does seem to be appropriate, appropriate for this application. Again, we went through the delineation process, I checked soils out there, I inventoried vegetation, that's in my report, and we're certainly available to answer any questions the board might have.
So based on your November 10th letter, am I correct in that you're just proposing a removal of about 1% of the existing vegetation? I think that's what you said in your, in your letter?
Yeah, there's, again, this, what we're proposing to remove is woody vegetation that was planted on the site that isn't appropriate to the site in terms of being in a wetland buffer. So that's coming out. There's, there's some Japanese maples, there's some other landscape plants, boxwoods that were planted that, that will be coming out.
And all told, your, your determination is that that's about 1% of the, of all of the vegetation? And all told, your, your determination is that that's about one percent of the, of all of the vegetation in that?
Yes, it's a very small, very small percentage.
Comprising a total of thirty-one square feet in total?
Yeah, if you count root ball by root ball, that's about all it is.
About thirty-one square feet?
Thirty-one square.
That's all gonna be done by hand?
All gonna be done by hand.
Do we need a secret determination? Because it's type two.
I'm curious, Adriana, if you had any comments or further questions in response to Mr. Marino's letter.
No, um, I, I don't. I think, you know, it's up to the board to request the level of detail that you feel that you need to make an informed decision at this point. And really, the question is, what is an appropriate remedy, almost, for the work that was already previously done? And since there's not a prescribed remedy in the code, this has been kind of, what has been mapped out for this applicant?
I think what Adriana is suggesting is that we might consider that the site is better just left as it is, with whatever the other plantings were there, just left in place. I don't know if you've driven by, I drove by, it's pretty overgrown. So I think one option would be to just leave it in place. But I would say, based on the November tenth letter from Mr. Miller, where we're talking about a total of thirty-one square feet being disturbed, you know, by hand, that I, I, I think I'd be fine to, to recommend, you know, approval of the, of the application.
Were, were, sorry, were the non-native things planted, like pre, from a previous owner, or?
No, no, they were pre, planted more recently after the cleanup onsite occurred. And again, it was primarily right along the road there, just as kind of landscape plantings.
So I didn't have time to write a resolution, but I would propose is that, or make a motion, is that we approve the permit application based on the, strictly based on the scope of work set forth in Mr. Miller's memo of November tenth, i.e., no more than one percent of the overall existing vegetation on the site be disturbed with a total of no more than thirty-one square feet of soil disturbance, and that, that work be supervised by Mr. Newman to make sure that it's in compliance with those limits.
Discussion.
And the native plants, we, we determine that the native plants, like poison ivy, that's a native plant, correct?
Yeah, but I don't think that's what they're taking out now.
That's not what they're taking.
No, no, all we're taking out now is some Japanese maples, boxwoods, hosta, you know, stuff that people generally use in their gardens, landscaping around their house that was placed in that area after the cleanup was done. So that's really all we're taking out at this point.
The ornamental.
Ornamental stuff. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Miller's letter seems, makes pretty clear that all they're taking out, and that's why I think the resolution is important to say that we want it to just adhere to your memo, is that all they're taking out are the non-native things that they planted when they shouldn't have been planted.
Because one of the main purposes of this application is the restoration of the wetland because of the existing violation, removal of those plants would aid in that restoration because they were planted as part of that violation.
Yeah, what, you've taken, I mean.
No, no, I came late, but do you, do you wanna revisit it, do you wanna?
No, I, that was the, what the gist of. That in the application.
Okay, I don't have any questions, we're gonna go.
I think we should vote.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Don't be sorry for your sorry.
Your eye.
Yes.
We're gonna, we're gonna move on to the East Clinton Fire District Firehouse in about five minutes. Hopefully it works.
Whatever you do, don't break it because I just borrowed this from the library.
There we go.
Works this thing.
There we go.
I take photo.
There you go, good job.
Very good, Adrian.
Leave it to the millennial.
Check this thing out, resolution, though, it does.
Get ready with one bar, so.
Yeah. And that same resolution is the drawing.
Yeah, it might be.
Nobody cares, cares about the drains, Chuck.
Yeah, I know.
You care about drains.
Show the whole site first, then zoom in, okay? Show the whole site, then zoom in. Okay, are you ready? Okay, we're gonna move on to East Clinton Fire District. This is an application for site plan approval for a new firehouse at eight Firehouse Lane, which is off Salt Point Turnpike in Clinton Corners. We will open the public hearing momentarily. Joe, did you have anything you wanted to say before we do that?
I can just brief description.
You gotta be on the mic. Yep.
But then you'll hear me.
Green light on it.
Yep, it's on. Joseph Berger, Berger Engineering, little feedback, how's that better? Maybe too much.
The mic just showed up, John.
There you go. You like me, sir? Please? So again, Joseph Berger, the civil engineer.
With me is Mike McCormick, the architect of the project. We're proposing a new firehouse for the East Clinton Fire District. It's a little over eleven thousand square foot building placed on the site. It's gonna be treated, we have it onsite well already there that was previously done, we're gonna reuse it. The, we're gonna be treating the sanitary sewage through a septic system, the subsurface sewage disposal. Stormwater will be collected and treated through an infiltration basin in the westly side of the site. We get an access off of Salt Point Turnpike on the northeast, the east portion of the site. The old firehouse is just south of us. All operations will be moved from that firehouse to this new firehouse. So it's in pretty much the same location within the town, but in a much more needed facility that's needed for, just the way the firehouse operates even today. Getting the fire trucks in and out of the bays, being able to maintain them and everything. It's in dire need for a new fire station.
We have a plan proposed here with the drive that comes around, circulates around it, with parking practically sixty-five spaces, of which nineteen will be in a reserve area that won't be paved, it will be just in a reserve area for when we need it, and forty-nine spaces, we feel is more than enough for the active use for when the firemen come and the active use of the site. Mike, anything on that building?
Sure, sweet. It's a, it's a very nice building.
Can you just move the mic, can you just move the mic toward Mike?
Thank you, Joe.
It's been right there, not too far.
Yeah, so the building is a single-story building, so basically, we can show it?
We have a pointer somewhere.
So as you know, this has been in evolution of a building. It's been taking form for a long time. It's a single-story building, and as you can see, the bays are on the right-hand side. There's five bays, and then on the left-hand side are the ancillary spaces that include an area for gathering offices, things of that nature that are all firematic, revolving around that. So the idea is that the structure will be a steel structure, some people call it a metal building, but that's really the structure itself, so that's how it's built. For the most part, we try to keep a little bit of the rural character, a little bit of the, the train station in terms of the look of it. The red look is, the siding is, is metal siding. It'll have a panel roof on it to, you know, really go with the metal siding itself. You know, the metal buildings, really, they're, the way they're built, it's really conducive, this type of structure, because it's long span. So you need the long spans when you have large spaces, like where the truck bays are, the equipment bays. This is a building that will be all, of course, up to New York State Code requirements. It's something that is much higher in level in terms of its usability as far as the fire company goes, from what's there to what this will be, and that's very important. The existing structure is in very, not in great shape. It is not conducive with the modern equipment that is needed to fight fires. So this will give the, the Fire District a building that will be there for a long term and serve the, the citizens very well. But, so for the most part, it's, as you can see, I, we have sloped roofs, we try to fit in with the characters of the neighborhood, and it'll fit in, I think, very nicely and be a backdrop.
Is that the actual color? Is it kind of a, what kind of color, what color is that?
It's like a reddish color. We can give you actual samples of the color, so you can, the plan board can take a look at it.
What kind of siding, I'm sorry, you're breaking it up.
Metal.
Metal siding, yeah.
What's the, it's, what is it, corrugated kind of, or what's the surface?
Yeah, they're like, yeah, a little bit corrugated, yeah, they have like a texture to them, a vertical texture.
Okay.
Do you have a plan for the public showing the landscaping that you're proposing?
Yes, we do. There you go, Joe, that's your, you wanna talk about it? I can, okay. So as you can see, the, the landscape and planting is very healthy. The edges of the, are buffered with new plantings to give some eye, a level in terms of eye cover for the neighbors. As you can see, along the, the one border, along the, the, on the, what's that, the? Yeah, right there. And that's the neighbors, and then the bat, the right side is all, along the neighborhood, we have a lot of plantings in terms of trees that will grow up over time. And what, what do we have in terms of fifteen-foot coming in?
Yes.
Yeah, fifteen-foot trees that start off at fifteen, and they're hardy, so they'll grow very fast. And then, of course, we have, as you can see, a lot of green area that's retained as much as possible. These types of buildings certainly have impervious surfaces that have to occur because of the, the equipment that's, runs across them, as well as parking and things of that nature. So Joe has his, his retention ponds, right?
One pond right here.
Right there. Yeah.
It's all gravel, that's it.
Yeah.
Gravel down as deep as we can go.
Yeah, actually, we got really good perk.
I mean, it was the best gravel I could have.
Yeah.
Very fast, I mean, you couldn't even, we took the fire truck, we filled it up three times. We couldn't get.
You gotta talk, talk.
Sorry. Not enough. Infiltration rate was so well with fire truck, luckily, we, Fire District, we had access to a fire truck. Filled the fire truck up three times and could not fill the holes up. It was flowing so well. Pre-soaked that for a day and a half. So we're very competent, very confident on the capability of that pond to handle as much water as we dumped in there.
And then around the building, we have some decorative plantings. That'll be low cover for the, the building itself.
Well, Adriana, what'd you, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was gonna ask, um, they've got pictures of the plants at the top?
Ah.
Thank you.
No, we need it for the public.
Along the edges, right here, these would be around the buildings.
So overall, it's a very healthy landscape plan that's, that's been proposed here.
And do you have an exterior lighting plan that you can show?
You have that, right?
Yeah, I did, uh, bring that with, uh, we did present that to the planning board.
I did not bring that with me. But it, it's dark sky compliant, very low, nothing over five foot candles. We've been working with the planner and the town engineer on making sure the only lights we have are what's necessary. Definitely dark sky compliant and we've reduced everything down to one foot candle, up to five or.
So it meets the zoning requirements?
Well, even more so, we, we went down as far as you can go. Nothing is spilling off the site, as the code doesn't allow. You don't hear that, though.
Are you, is that it? Are you finished? I forgot where we were.
The lighting plan.
Lighting, yeah, okay, good. Anybody, anything else, Alex, or anybody else? Jack, Justin. Okay, so why don't we, um, move, we're gonna move on to the hearing phase. So, um, before we do that, let me just make a couple of comments. When you, um, if you wanna make a, if you're in the audience and you wanna comment, go to that mic right over there to my left. And we ask, we, we, it, we, we prefer that you identify yourself and tell us where you, you know, just approximately where you live, but if you don't wanna do that, you don't have to. Address your comments to the board, not to the applicant or the audience. If you have a question that we can readily answer, we may be able to do that, but just address the board members. Um, the plans, if you don't wanna look at this, if you wanna look more closely, there's a set of, there's a paper poster kind of thing with the plans on that easel over there, if you'd rather look at that. If you wanna look at the plans, they're available online on the town website under the, under this application, which is the Planning Board tab. And you look under Current Agenda Items or Open Applications, and you'll see a whole bunch of documents relating to the application. So if you wanna go home and look at, look at anything relating to the application, you can do that. We're gonna, we're, we'll go through the hearing tonight. I think we're gonna leave the hearing open, so there'll be another opportunity to comment at another meeting. Um, and starting now, you can also submit written comments, um, which carry the same weight as spoken comments. You can do that anytime. You submit them to Arlene by email or letter in the Planning Board office. And, um, oh, one other thing, this is a site plan review. Um, this is a permitted use in the hamlet zone. And so we actually are not required to issue any permit, a permit per se. We're, we're really just reviewing and approving the site plan, which is the, the drawings that you're seeing here, the, the, um, the plan of the building, the parking, the landscaping, the lighting. It's not a special use permit situation, so, um, we're not imposing any terms and conditions on the operation or anything like that. So anyway, with that, I'll make a motion to open the, anybody else have anything?
I just wanted to, um, in connection with the site plan review, because the Fire District is a, um, Adriana can correct me if I'm wrong, is a public use. There are some zoning issues that, that we as a planning board have an ability to waive. Um, and there's a balancing test that we don't really need to talk about. You know, the factors of the balancing test, but the things I think that the Fire District are asking us to waive in the zoning review, I think mostly have to do with the, the bulk area coverage. Right, so there are rules about how much of the lot can be covered with the building and the improvements. And, uh, the Fire District is asking us to waive those rules in connection with this, with this site plan. We haven't made a determination yet, obviously, but that's one of the things we're gonna be talking about.
Thank you, Eric. Thanks for, I should've brought that up, that's good. Um, okay, anybody else, anything? Okay, so, uh, motion to open the public hearing. Somebody second? Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
So our hearing's open at this point? Does anybody wanna comment on the application? I don't know where that's coming from.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Cook. I live on Willow Lane, but I'm also the president of the Clinton Historical Society, which owns and operates the Creek Meeting House, which is on the National Register of Historic Places. And I, um, I had very much hoped to see how this plan is going to mitigate any impact whatsoever on the Creek Meeting House, which is an eighteenth century stone building, which we are in the process of a multimillion dollar campaign to restore and revitalize. I came to the hearings or the public meetings prior to the election, and I expressed then that I think the town does, does need a new, a new firehouse. I think they've made their case very well, and I congratulate them for that. But I had asked at the time what, you know, what plans there were to screen the facility from the Creek Meeting House. I'm now, I hadn't even thought about lighting. I, you know, ideally, and I hope we can have this, maybe I say it realistically. I don't know where this is going to be, but I see yellow tape out in the area immediately behind the Creek Meeting House. I had asked before, where is this building sited vis a vis the Creek Meeting House? And I still don't even see the Creek Meeting House on the site plan. And if those are deciduous trees that are going to be planted along the edge, they're going to, you know, and if there's lighting that's going to be on, this is going to have a major impact on the Creek Meeting House and our activities there. And that doesn't even take into, you know, into consideration parking for sixty-five cars and the numerous activities that might be taking place there. So I'm asking the board to please investigate all possible aspects of possible harm to the appearance, the siding, and the operation of the activities in the Creek Meeting House.
Would you, I mean, do you have any thoughts on how the impacts could be mitigated? Or would you put something in writing that might sort of clarify the issues for us?
First thing, I'd like to see where is it? I mean, why, why isn't the Creek Meeting House on the site plan?
Do you have like a broad, a broader view that?
I can't hear you.
The house is further away than we normally would locate, but we, we could show it. I don't think it's.
Probably in the parcel access? Oh, yeah, that's just.
It's way up here.
No, it's way up there, no.
Maybe in parcel access, um.
Do you have like an aerial view or something?
Aerial view in the parcel access. Point over there.
You have to go online to the parcel access.
I mean, maybe what would help if they staked it, you know, the four, are the four corners staked, Joe, or no?
No, but.
No, I'd like to see it on the, I'd like to see the plan showing the proximity to the Creek Meeting House and the graveyard, which is also on the National Register.
Well, the graveyard's over here.
Well, the graveyard surrounds the Creek Meeting House on three sides. And my understanding is that your new building
It's too far away.
is more about where that word legend is. And some of the notes to legend, from what I can see, is going to be right there.
We could, we could go out and show it, but typically, that's far further away than it typically would go. You don't show houses a hundred feet away.
I mean, I need, I, for me to be comfortable, there'll have to be a lot of shrubbery of all heights. Screening this new facility and some plan for lighting that will not have it on when it's, I mean, I, some plan for lighting, some plan for parking, I, I, I just don't understand it. And I've been waiting a long time to, to see these things.
A lot of that's on the plan, you can't see that, or?
Pardon me?
Parking is depicted on the plan.
Yeah, I think, isn't the entrance to the firehouse going to be in the front facing the Creek Meeting House? Aren't those the fire doors?
Yes.
Fire truck doors?
Yes.
So even that in and of itself is of some concern. Why does it have to be right, right in front so the trucks coming and going? You know, if we were in there having a meeting and something's going on there, there's gonna be trucks coming and going in and out of, you know, in and out of the fire thick.
So this area here is all vegetated, and then we're adding these additional trees along the edge of the bank of the stream. Uh, this road is really following the path that's out there right now.
Those are evergreens that you're adding?
Pardon me? But this path that we got here is basically where you drive through that site now. The yellow taping you see out there is for where we did the historic diggings for shipbuilding. Had nothing to do with the building.
With the buildings.
Pardon me?
Buildings way over here, way in the back.
So can you, can you point out on this plan where the yellow tape is that she's, that she's talking about?
There, see the shipbuilding area?
It's there?
And what is that for?
This is, this is a historic preservation, had us dig, uh, certain areas for historic preservation.
Well, that would be because of our building, so I, I think I oughta know about.
And that here was, yeah, one of the yellow taped areas, and this is another.
So your building is not going to be where that yellow tape is?
No, those are areas that were identified as anomalies by the, by Hartsen Archaeology.
What is it, what kind of areas are they?
Anomalies. That's a term that they use.
Anomalous, okay.
Anomaly, anomaly.
Are they doing archaeology?
We're not, we can't have a Q and A.
I don't know.
Okay.
But I mean, there's, I have a lot of questions.
Okay.
And have been, have, you know, I need a lot of answers.
I think as, I think maybe the best thing to do would be put them in writing, and we're gonna leave the commentary period open for a while.
Okay.
Or you can raise them now if you want, but, but what, but I'm just thinking in terms of organization, it might be easier.
Can I have a plan that shows where it is?
The plans are on the webs, town website, as well as.
No, the plan doesn't show where it is vis a vis the Creek Meeting House.
They're on the town website.
No, but I think she's saying in like relation to the Creek Meeting.
I, I got that, yeah, but there's also parcel access maps in there, I'm pretty sure. I think we usually pull those.
The develop, the architects, where exactly they're planning to put this in relationship to this eighteenth century historic building.
So Pete had a good suggestion, would it be? Would it be possible for you to stake the four corners of the building on the site and maybe?
No, I wanna see it on the plan, I'm sorry.
I don't think that's gonna help what she wants. We could add it to the plan, if that's what you want.
That's what I want.
Well, we actually have it.
Can you, can you?
Yeah.
Can you?
We have that shown on the plan, there are a lot more sheets. I didn't bring all the sheets with me tonight.
So they're, they're on the website, they're, they're on the, if they've submitted them, they're on the website.
But we could add it to the landscaping plan if that's what the board wants. It's not, it'll be based on the parcel access, it's not based on a survey, because surveyor's not gonna go locate something a hundred feet off the property line.
Do you have the, um, plan on your computer?
The survey plan, no, I didn't bring every single one.
Do you have them in the room? These plans?
Okay, do you, do you wanna look at those?
I will write everything down, but.
You can come back and make a comment if you want.
I'll come back, but I'll need to see, before I can even write anything.
Okay.
I need to see what's proposed.
If you, if you look at part, if nothing else, if you look at parcel access.
I don't wanna look at parcel access myself because I might make a mistake.
Okay, I'm just saying, if you want the information, it's publicly available. Okay, but maybe Pete can find it.
Yeah, I want them to do it so I can see it from their professional point of view.
Okay.
Okay, I will then put things in writing.
Okay, thank you. Other comments?
My name is Russ Tompkins. I'm one of the only natives in this town alive, being born here in this town eighty-one years ago. I happen to be a fire commissioner also in that district, and I was an active member of it back in the sixties. The firehouse definitely needs replacing. We had to buy a special truck to get in because of the low clearance in the existing firehouse. Trucks are getting bigger, so there's no doubt in my mind we need it. I don't wanna be confrontational, but I don't think there's any windows in the back of the historic, what I used to call the up in Lake Grange, I went there to square dance it sixty years ago. I don't think there's any windows in the back looking out onto this area. And I can't see any way how it's gonna be any detriment to the Creek Meeting House. And I don't think the people in the state area are gonna be concerned because they're not gonna be getting up out of the grace to look at it. I think it's a well-planned thing. I think it's gonna fit in well, realizing that your house is what the firemen are protecting. We have a excellent fire department that has almost a hundred percent response rate. And I don't see where this is gonna be any detriment to, to anything, and I think it's gonna be an asset to the whole town. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If I may, we can provide that information on the plan for the board.
Site plan with the other buildings.
And we could get it to you tomorrow if you want.
Thank you.
That's not a problem.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Howard Shapiro. Uh, I'm also, I am the vice chair of the East Clinton Fire District Commissioner Board. I'm also a member of the, board member of the Millbrook School District, Central School District Board of Education. And I just point out the obvious for people that know the area. The current firehouse that we are replacing happens to be not too far from the, a good stone's throw from the, from the proposed firehouse. And as trucks move around and the sirens are turned on, the, the neighbors, including the Creek Meeting House, would hear those. The current new house, uh, which was, in my opinion, of course, the board's opinion, well planned, but the Fire Commissioner Board wants to be a good neighbor to the town. We want this to be an asset to the community. And that includes all neighbors, including, of course, the historic hamlet of the town. We wanna fit in to, uh, to, to this historic hamlet. We wanna be an integral, integral part of this entire community. I've lived in this community since nineteen eighty-six, and I believe in community volunteering. And I thank you, people, for your volunteering. And, uh, this new firehouse currently as designed should not affect the neighborhood any more than the old firehouse should. Of course, yes, we will show the plan to show where the Creek Meeting House is. But the Creek, again, when you compare it to where the old firehouse is, there's really not much difference in sound or noise. And lighting will be done, so it's low-key and it fits into the character of the community, which we know is historic. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Oklahoma, Ten Firehouse Lane, I am, can you pull up the map again that you were just there? We're the neighbor on the left in the, in the property. Right in here? Yeah. There, that's it, right there. Uh, there's an existing tree there now that's, an old growth tree that's pretty ni, very nice. Probably right there. Yes, right on the property line. Right there. Yep. There's three existing right here as well. And three existing as well. Are you planning on doing anything with that tree?
No, it's on your property, so no.
Okay.
That's right.
Matter of fact, we're adding additional, the whole road here, and we relocated parking was right here away so that we weren't gonna have parking next to you.
Okay, good, thank you.
So we did a lot of changes trying to accommodate your. So we did a lot of changes trying to accommodate your, your close proximity.
Very good, and the other question I have for you, the retention pond in the back, is that gonna be like a swampy pond, or how is that gonna work? Is it gonna smell?
No, the gravel there is so good that you're never gonna see water in it, it's gonna have a lawn, it's gonna be like a depressed lawn.
So what's the retention pond for?
Stormwater, but the gravel is so good, any stormwater up to 100 years ago can go through and drain.
Oh, it's just stormwater. It's not like you're gonna be taking the existing water that's in the fire trucks and putting it in the back or anything?
No, it's stormwater.
Like a drywall.
This is, yeah, it's, yeah, yeah, but that's gonna be pre-treated too, with the sediment, you know, but in there, by the time it gets there, it's gonna drain in the ground, it's gonna have a lawn, you're gonna see a depressed lawn, it's gonna be grass.
So it's gonna be like a gravel indentation, that type thing?
Well, it's of gravel, but it's gonna have a lawn on top.
Oh, okay.
So you'll see-
It'll be mowed?
Yeah, it'll be mowed, it'll be, look like a lawn, but depressed.
And can I just ask, what's that triangular shaped thing in the back, is that gonna be a pond as well?
That is the pond.
That is the pond, okay.
It's truly grass, everything, it's depressed.
It won't hold water. It's not gonna hold water.
Oh, it doesn't hold water?
It's only gonna, it's only gonna hold water for a certain period of time.
I know we're all bank run in that whole area, so it does drain better than-
Oh, it goes 60, 70 inches per hour, I mean, the water's just gonna drain right through.
Was that, was that the area where you dumped three trucks worth of water? They, I don't know if you were here, but they said they dumped like three or four trucks of water.
Full fire trucks, we kept going to the pond and refilling.
We don't get any, yeah.
I mean, that's just fantastic gravel, and we'll have topsoil on top, so that there'll be a lawn there.
Okay, any other question?
It'll be mulled and maintained, just like the rest of the lawn.
Any other question I have, in the front of our property where those three trees are, that's all gonna be parking and, and-
No, this area is gonna be septic system, subsurface sewage disposal. The only parking's gonna be along the old road that you see that's there now, and that's gonna be lawn, it's just for overflow. So we have additional spaces for for practicality, parking's gonna be around the building here. And again, we eliminated the parking in here that we originally had, in, in trying to take that in consideration for close proximity here, to your house.
The only difference is the asphalt, like where you're at now, is maybe five feet from our property line, I don't know how, how that's gonna work.
Well, that's why we got screening right there.
I mean, is there a zoning requirement for that?
Not for-
No, I think we're more than five feet, I think we're closer to 15 feet.
That's a good question, so, um, not for driveways, but for park, what did, is that, is this one of the variances that we're gonna be waving?
No.
No, the parking is not within the setback.
Okay. The setbacks apply to bill, oh-
The setbacks apply to the building?
The buildings, yeah, not to the parking.
It's gonna be ugly, I could just tell you that right, right from the get-go, so. What I suggest, and you, if you guys can do this, put a fence along that, that piece, and along the front, so I don't have to see everything that's happening there.
So if I understand correctly-
Fence along the property line?
You want a fence here-
You don't have to go all the way back, I'm just suggesting where you can see from our house.
So your house is here, so you see from where that tree is, right? Down to here, and then down to here.
The large, the large tree, yes.
Yeah, so the big tree that's by your septic.
No, I'm, what you're talking about, that large-
Yeah, the big tree.
That large elm you're talking, there's another tree along the property line.
There's three here, there's one big one there.
Directly on the side of our house. Go down a little further?
Yeah, that one right there is a big one.
Nope, nope.
Totally, I've totally waived my rules on not asking questions to the applicant.
That's a difficult one, yeah.
It's right on the line, I don't know if it's ours or theirs.
I'll go check on that, because I, I didn't see any on our-
Why would they take that, I don't think they have to take it out.
I think it's on their property, so we won't touch it.
Are any trees being taken out along the property line?
There were none on our property in that area.
Answer's no, yeah, okay.
I'll verify that with the survey.
I think the fence, the fence thing we should look into, though.
I'll verify that with the survey.
I mean, it doesn't have to be like 20 feet high, it just has to be high enough to screen off from your view, right?
I incorrectly-
Okay.
Stockade fence, something that the wind goes through, something like that.
Let me take out what's needed.
Okay.
I'll look at that, though, we may be able to put a well around. We'll look into that to verify-
It's not gonna screen everything, but the parking-
So we'll verify that, and we'll just-
Headlights and-
Matter of fact, I know about the fence.
We're at the fence.
We can't speak on that.
Any other comments, or, we're gonna leave the comment period open, but if you, anything else for now, or?
No.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Other comments from the public?
Hi, 10 Firehouse.
Oh.
Is there any way we could have some say in the shrubbery?
Well, you can-
And plantings, I mean, we're not, I don't think we're unreasonable. Do we have some sort of say, we're gonna be the ones looking at it?
You can certainly give us your comments and suggestions, and that's why we're, that's why we're doing this. Yeah, they haven't, the landscape plan is not set in stone, so to speak, maybe just in mulch, but-
Yeah, so what I would suggest is if you go, if you go on the town website, you can see this landscape plan with the photos of the plants that they're suggesting. So if you have specific comments, send them to Arlene, and we'll absolutely consider them.
What, what, just, just, in terms of that line there, that's, what's the plan for that right now, and, and it can be changed, as I was just, you know? What, what are, what are those, the green things that are-
Those are the cedars.
Those are all evergreens?
Yes. And we're, we're, we're open to what they want, they just need to tell us what they want.
I think they're probably spruces, right, or something that's deerproof?
Well, we're open to what you want. I believe it's cedar, sorry.
On that property, on your cedar. But again, that's our choice, if there's some specifics, I'm sure the fire district will take that into consideration.
So they're trying to screen it, but if you have things that you think would work better, we, we can take, certainly take that into consideration.
Now, with the fence there, they probably won't see them.
Although, we're considering a fence.
Right, well, that, but that's not gonna go the whole, are the trees gonna go the whole property line?
Yes.
Okay, then, yeah. And then, my other question, I don't know if it goes to this or more of the finance part. So it's proposed to be, what, six million?
So, that's not really our purview.
That's what I wasn't sure.
But if you wanna, I'm sure, if you wanna ask one of the commissioners, they would, you know, there was a vote on this at some point, I can't remember when.
Yeah, no, I, we voted, but we're just wondering like those prices versus when they actually start building, what it costs.
Right.
Definitely not us.
Where does the money come from?
Yeah, we're, we're not involved with the finances, but I, I'm sure they would, you know, if you wanna-
Who isn't, who do I ask that then?
There's one right there, yeah, there's actually a couple of them in the audience, yeah. Thank you. Other comments?
I'd like the name of who you're dealing with at Shipoh, and who's doing the archaeology. Because the land that, the firehouse and the train station, all of that was originally part of the burying ground associated with the Creek Meeting House. So, any archaeology that they're doing there, I should, I should know about, and should be aware of. But in 1870, the Quakers sold the land on which the rail line was put through and the right-of-way.
So, so we did hire Hartsden Archaeology, their reference with Shipoh approved archaeologist. They, they completely did, they studied, and went through a phase one and a phase two, which included not just only digs, but ground penetrating radar. They did an extensive review of the site over the last three months, and we found several areas, anomalies, of which were dismissed as nothing to worry about. And the site is in the presence to be, before Shipoh, the Historic Preservation Office, for final determination. And once we get that, we'll share that with the town. But we're in the process of, the archaeologists is in the process of working with Shipoh with their report.
Could you give me the names of the people involved?
Did Hartsden, Hartsden.
A piece of paper.
Not until it's final, because it goes through Shipoh first.
And who are you dealing with at Ship, in other words, could I have some of this in writing?
We don't deal with Shipoh, the archaeologists, and it's very much, that process is very restricted.
So, we're gonna post everything online, Cynthia?
Okay, so I can reach out to them.
And you'll have the whole, the report, the, you know, what they did, and what Shipoh's response is, right? You're gonna submit it as soon as you have it.
Yeah, right now, it's a draft report that is done directly through the archaeologist, through, to Shipoh. Once they get that done, we get a copy and we'll submit it to you.
And our, our planner, Adriana's our planner, she's-
I was always assured-
She's gonna review it.
That we were going to be formally notified because of the proximity to the land. And I'm, I'm just flabbergasted-
I'm sure they did.
That this has gone forward without any kind of formal notification to us, and that in fact archaeology has been done on what was formerly Quaker, Quaker land. So I, I really think that there's a requirement that you involve a national historic landmark, registered building that's, that's within-
And that's why we have an archaeologist on board.
But you never let us know.
Let me correct you, because you're wrong.
So I found out about it.
Okay, Mike, Mike, please.
Because the process we are following is the right process, as far as secret goes, and the archaeologist is working with Shipoh. That is, this is the process, we don't know what it is until we get the report from the archaeologist, so that we can give it to the planning board, that's current.
I came to meetings in the firehouse and expressed these very things, and I was assured that we would be included in the discussions, and that we would come tonight and we would see the sighting.
So can I suggest we get the Shipoh results, and we'll post them, and you can, you know, make a copy of them and you can have them, and then we can have a discussion, if you're, in terms of your, okay, in terms of your concerns, we can, you know, if you have concerns, you raise them with us, because as I said, we're leaving the comment period open.
Could we have a sit-down, maybe?
Well, you can sit down with them, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I-
If they're willing, I mean, it's up to them.
Just to understand what's being proposed.
So the board knows, the status of what's going on is basically the archaeologist's telling me the status of where it is, so I can report to you tonight. The report is not finalized, and when it's finalized, we will supply that to you. But I reached out to the archaeologist today, and, on Friday, actually, to give them a heads-up. So, can you tell me where you are with this? And this is where it is, and then it came back, we worked with them in order to locate the anomalies, and to stake out the building, and help them with their study, but we don't guide their study, they, they work, they're archaeologists, they work with Shipoh, and Shipoh tells them what to do, we're not involved with that, other than to get the information and provide them what they need relevant to property line and location.
It's Shipoh I wanna talk to.
Okay. Any comments from Peter or Adriana on this point? Is it, you're, you're gonna be reviewing whatever we get from Shipoh, right, and, okay, okay.
That was phase one, A, that was, the phase one A was complete, and was provided to the town as the phase one.
Okay.
And that's what, once it was presented to us as a final phase one, we provided it to the town. The phase one recommended a phase one A, and then a phase two, which was the study, which is a hand dig, walk-around record, they already did the record search, and then the final was the GPR, which is ground penetrating radar, which came out of the digging, so when they did all their little test pits, they concluded that the test pits maybe were not going down deep enough. So, because of the historic nature, and the fact that there was the graveyard nearby, Shipoh recommended to Hartsden, from what I understand, and they went back and forth in the protocol, I wasn't part of that, that ground penetrating radar, and the reason I know about the ground penetrating radar was I had to stake it out and get the fire district to authorize payment for it. They're just not gonna do that without that, so we're, we are knowledgeable what's going on based on the economics of it, and how long it would take, and how much it would cost to do the gun, so they did ground penetrating radar up and down the entire area, and that's when they came up with the anomalies.
Okay. Other comments from the public? Okay, um, so I'm gonna propose we leave the hearing open, at least until the next meeting. Are you okay with that, everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, um, in terms of consultants' comments, is there anything, Adriana or Pete, that you wanted to raise tonight? Are there, are there open comments that they need to address? Okay, do you wanna just mention that, or, or no?
Sure, I think the only-
Can you just move them, oh, yeah.
So we had issued a memo, but we have not, I don't know that we've received a full submission and response.
No, because we set the public hearing at that seat, so the reason we haven't responded was we got the comments at the last meeting where we set the public hearing.
Yep.
And then, then we thought that the best way to respond would be take the comments from both the planner and the engineer, along with the comments from the public hearing, and give you a comprehensive response back. We looked at the comments from both the planner and the engineer, we felt that they were administrative and nothing that would change anything in the plan. They were just administrative, and we agree with them. I read them thoroughly, I understand them, they were very good comments, and we're, actually have, and do, modified the plans, we just haven't submitted, we were planning on submitting at the next deadline, but with the public hearing being open, I'm not sure what the proper procedure is at this point to submit or not.
Yeah, I think, I think it makes sense to take our, at least my, my planning comments into consideration in conjunction with the public comment, because a lot of them are around landscaping, lighting, and, and that type of thing. The only, the only thing that I think Pete and I both noticed was the wetland buffers. Now we're dealing with Army Corps wetlands, and we understand that the DEC is no longer a question, there's, there's no DEC jurisdictional wetlands. There's still a 100-foot buffer, it's not clear what the 100-foot buffer is related to, there are local wetlands on the site, so we're just asking for a little bit of clarity in the future plans as to which buffers apply, both from a, a local permitting or Army, there's no Army-
We can clarify that, we kept the 100-foot on because your code says that 100-foot is subject to your wetland.
So, right, and but it didn't seem-
We kept that.
Just check your boundaries, that it's 100 feet from your delineation.
It is.
And then there's also a stream buffer.
There's two different ones, and we have both, we have on there both 100 and 150.
When we, when we looked at it together, it was not clear, so I'm just asking you guys just to look at it, that's all.
Okay, I'll make sure they're clear.
Thank you.
So I think, coming out of tonight, we want a slight plan that shows the Creek Meeting House and cemetery with all the boundaries and everything. It would be great, I think you should, if you could, sketch in the fence that the gentleman suggested along that side-
That's with our client.
For screening those houses. And the Shipoh review, is that something that's imminent, or, I'm just worried, I'm trying to figure out scheduling right now.
That's the state, we have no idea what they are gonna do.
There's a process, for archaeological artifacts, right, there's a state sanctioned process, and so if artifacts are found on the site, they have to be removed prior to any construction being, being conducted.
Nothing's been found on the site.
Right, and nothing has been found on the site at this point, and so, you know, I think the question is whether the meeting house is protected enough, and, you know, the design is historically contextual and so forth. I did notice when we were looking at aerials just now, that there is some existing vegetation on the, the adjacent parcel-
Yes, there is.
That may also act as a visual cue, right, because the meeting house seems to be kind of actually behind that as well. So you have landscaping, there's landscaping on the cemetery parcel and the meeting house, if you could show that, I think that would also be very helpful.
Oh, and staking the building, is that possible, or is that, is it staking the building?
I mean, that's cost you're adding to the, to the fire district, but anything could be done.
Well, that's, that's what I'm thinking, the board may wanna go over there and look. Just four stakes, not, yeah, not, just approximate, yeah, doesn't have to meet some bounds on it.
Takes the same amount of work for a survey to go out and put four stakes, approximate, or, within the foot, so it's not, it's not cheaper. Yes, but those stakes won't last through the winter, so it's, the stakes you put now are not gonna be there for construction. Oh, we can certainly do it, I'm just telling you, there's additional costs that the district will incur.
You should stake it, just because this way the Creek, the Creek, the Creek meeting people can see it, if anybody-
Residents can see it.
If anybody from the planning board wants to go out and look at the site, you'll know where, you know, the building is, you know, it's four corners.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, I disagree, I'm-
Before we, before we close, I just-
Yeah, absolutely.
So one, so we had our agenda call last week, and Adriana started to touch on, you know, the wetlands, so we have a local, we have a local permit, and, I don't remember, did we say that one was filed, or there hasn't been local wetland?
Yeah, wetland, yes.
Okay, so what, so, so the, the other thing we talked about was that the staging and materials stores area that's shown now on the plan would be within the 100-foot buffer of, you know, the wetlands, so- now on the plan would be within the hundred-foot buffer of, you know, the wetlands, so, several of, you know, the board members that were on the call, it's not the entire board, of course, but there was some concern that was expressed that, as part of the wetlands permit, that you may not want a materials and contractor staging area where there could be trucks that might leak oil, or whatever, I mean, there could be things that are stored in that area, so, that's just something that we did talk about that I wanna mention, that we're gonna have.
Did you want it put on the plan as to where that's, where that's gonna be, is that what you're saying?
Well, so, you know, I asked, I asked, you know, the question, you know, like, all the time, about material storage, like, in staging area, and Joe's, and Joe's, you know, a hundred percent like right, in his like response, that normally, you know, the contractors, you know, will figure it out, you know, in the field. This is a very tight site, I've had conversations with Tom, you know, about, this is really something you guys should, you know, like, talk about and figure it out before, you know, you bid the job, you know, Mike, you know, like, you know about this, because when contractors bid the job, they're gonna wanna know where they're gonna park, where they're gonna put, like, materials, and it's a very tight, like, site, and they don't have access. I at first thought that they could store, like, materials at, you know, the firehouse.
That's right.
But then there's, you know, you know, the gentleman, you know, the gentleman's property is in between that, so they don't have access from the firehouse over to this site. So, there's really a very limited area to store, like, materials, so, and as part of the wetlands permit, if, you know, the board doesn't want, you know, contractor parking and stuff in a hundred-foot wetlands buffer, that's gonna even further, like, restrict it, so I'm just saying that they should talk about it now and try to figure this out, because it's not really a hundred percent like a site plan issue, but it's gonna be an issue for them when they go to go build the thing, so, I'm just saying, they should think about it.
Was that, are you, you're gonna have to consider that?
We've been discussing it.
Yeah.
You've been discussing it?
Yeah. That's, that's part of the next submission, we have that.
I think, I think we should just move on with the, I think, you know, in terms of scheduling, we should move to address the comments that are out there, and, where do we sequence in the two fifty, the wetlands permit, Adriana, when do we get to that, because that's.
I would say that that's part of, I mean, this overall approval, it would be part of that.
Part of the site plan approval?
So whatever resolution you adopt, approval of the project, what it called, where in the chapter seven.
Um, so the next meeting is December second, is this feasible or not, to have them come back, or should we?
Well, there's, the deadline's already passed for the December second meeting, but I certainly could get something, yeah, so I can't meet the deadline, but if we're gonna have the public hearing reopened on there, I certainly can get information to you by, uh, middle of next week, if not sooner, but that may not be enough time, I don't know how you want to.
We have a meeting on this, December seventeenth, but, um, you know, we have.
That might be, that might be the better meeting to, you know, continue, continue hearing.
Yeah.
If you do that, that gives me, if you give me until, again, the middle of next week, which I was gonna use anyway.
Okay.
For the, next, I believe next week, it, uh, yeah, this week is, next week is the deadline for the January meeting, that's the one I was shooting for.
The January meeting?
If we can do the public hearing in December, and just leave that a little bit of time, I can get you all these comments, I would, I would like to have received the comments from the historic place and the neighbor on what they want from landscaping, so we incorporate that, but we could certainly respond to the things that we heard tonight, in order for you, for you.
Joking, you know, and he said, he's, um, he said that he couldn't provide that plan to the town, that shows the overall, where the Creek Meeting House is.
Yeah, I could do all that.
In relation to this, so he could, so he can get that to the town, so.
Sure.
You know, if they wanna come in and look at it, and then it's a question of, he needs some time to update the plans, look at the wetlands a little bit.
Okay.
Talk about, you know, the staging area, and then so maybe, I don't know, is it December, or like January meeting, if they wanna come?
Could be January.
I'd rather do December, so we get the comments, and we can then work on those comments, instead of.
Um, we could, we could tentatively say December seventeen, we have six sentences, but they'll be after you, we could start at six, and they can go at seven or something.
So we'll be on as late as you want us to.
Okay, they can go at six, and you can go at, you know, ten.
We'll do whenever you permit us to be on, we're, timing's not gonna.
That's right.
It's up to you, we're not gonna dictate when you put us on, we're at your, you know.
Yeah, we have a few things to cover with them, so.
We'd like to, but, no, we don't like to.
Okay. You want December seventeen, Mike? Oh, you, you wanna be first, right, okay.
Yeah, it's a public hearing, you gotta be first.
It's professional courtesy, Mike, for you, we will put you wherever.
I've been through most.
Yeah.
You can be first anyway, public hearing.
Okay, so, so December seventeen, if there's a problem, we'll, we'll rethink it, but that's what we'll do, and, uh, probably start at six.
And we'll have the thing staked out, you know, I'm assuming.
We'll stake it, stake out the building, just roughly, it doesn't have to be perfect.
Well, it'll be, it's, I might as well do it right on the, it's this, you go out there and stake it out, just stake it off a foot or two, right on it, within a tenth is the same effort. As a surveyor, I can't, that's like hammering a nail with a sledgehammer, when I can't stake out.
He wants to do exactly.
I can't do it, I just can't bring it to myself to stake it out lousy, to be honest. So I'll stake it within a tenth, which is the same effort of work.
We appreciate it.
It is the same effort of work, I mean, I don't. I mean, we, we use GPS, goes out there, tells us where to go, right on it, within a tenth, to be off a foot, it's not any easier.
Great, so we, we're done?
No.
Okay, everybody, Pete, you're good?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the presentation, it was excellent, and, um, as I mentioned, written comments can be submitted anytime between now and the seventeenth, of, the pub, by the public, I mean, um, and we will have another hearing on the seventeenth, so if people wanna speak, they'll be able to.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Anything else from the board, or, no? Do you, Catherine, did you have anything?
Wetlands permit's gonna be on December meeting. The wetlands permit will be before the. Everybody, please, please, first one, stop, and take it outside, take it outside.
We're not finished with the meeting yet, please.
Take it outside, please, first one, meeting.
You guys go outside.
Thank you, Catherine.
I was gonna whistle, but I decided that was in bad taste. I ran a lot of summer camps. All I wanted to say was that the, uh, wetlands law will be before the board at the December meeting, so, we'll introduce it, and then we'll have the public hearing in January, and we should vote on it, that, I have the final, there's one tweak, but I have almost, the pretty much final draft, which I will send to all of you, so that you can read it, 'cause many eyes make sense with this stuff, um, but that's really all I've got, unless you need something from me.
Okay.
It's a Monday, should they move it to the Monday, eight, or?
I have no idea.
Yes, Jeff is correct, December eighth. It's a Carol question. Just that we'll introduce it, public hearing in January, vote on it in January, but I'm gonna send it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a Christmas holidays, people.
You were asking when they're doing the wetlands thing, is that, okay, December eighth is the town board meeting. Comprehensive Plan Committee, is that up and run, Comprehensive Plan Committee, is that up and running, or?
Comprehensive Plan Committee, we're doing, um, interviews of the people that have expressed interest on the first and the second of December. Uh, there are seven or eight applicants and, from the public, and we're only taking four, to try and keep it to a manageable amount. So as soon as that's done, I'm hoping maybe we could start meeting in January, realistically? Who from, which, who from this board is con, I don't remember who volunteered from this board. Okay, okay, great.
I also volunteer, Alex.
Look at that, now you got two lawyers.
I support your volunteering out. Well, there's gonna be parts, so there'll be somebody from planning, somebody from zoning, somebody from CAC, and then four members of the public, and Elliot and myself, so it's a good, it should be a good mix. So that's where we're at with the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Right? But thank you for asking, I didn't think about.
Sure.
Give anyone with children on the board.
It would make, it would make it more fun, maybe.
Oh, the hospitality rewrite, is that, is that not happening, or?
Elliot, um, at the last town board meeting said that it was being worked on, I don't know what the timeline is. Um, I think they have to, the discussion was to extend the moratorium, just to get time to rewrite that law, and then do the comprehensive plan, and see where we land, and what people want.
Okay.
Great.
So you're working on, Adriana, you're working on that, kind of, or?
Yeah, Shane moved me in.
Okay.
So we had a chat about different tools, and we, uh, this provider, um, I just provided a, a, a low, frozen con, to the different approaches.
Great.
So we're working on that, which we discussed, a zoning study, which seemed, like, there was interest. As a, as an intro, um, it's more, it's unsure exactly how the zoning, it's a mystery, we have to look at it.
So, okay, that's great, I feel like that's sort of what we suggested a few months ago.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Awesome. Everyone's agreeing, good. Okay.
Sure.
Anybody else, anything, uh, we have minutes or anything, or no, no minutes? Minutes, which ones? Twenty, October twenty-seven? Motion to approve, October twenty-seven minutes, all in favor, aye. Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Thank you very much, everyone.
Brandon, we're.
Thank you, Brandon.